We're reading it tonight, presented to the council in the spirit of continuing consensus. Reject what you must, but please use what you can. Its strengths can be attributed to the collective wisdom of all the people who contributed. Its weaknesses are the responsibility of those few of us who drafted it, and we apologize for them. Thank you.
My name is Michael Feyman. I live at 17880 Beargrass Mountain Road in Everoe, Montana. We, the people of Missoula, Montana, continuing in the long tradition of Jeanette Rankin and other local peace activists vehemently denounce the use of violence as a means of resolving disputes. We commit ourselves to opposing all war in a nonviolent manner. This resolution is in response to, but is in no means limited to, the current violent situation in the Middle East. We denounce both Iraq and the United States for their violent actions there, and we plead with both to lay aside their prides and seek peace in any way possible. Violence leads to violence, war to war. The cycle must stop now within an immediate ceasefire. As citizens, we recognize our responsibility for actions carried out in our name and urge our fellow citizens to recognize theirs. We demand that our elected officials at all levels of government recognize their responsibility to us by taking a clear stand for peace and by acting for peace. We consider soldiers and their families on both sides of the dispute to be victims of war. We act on their behalf and on behalf of all others disturbed by war. We respect the dedication and loyalty of our women and men in the armed forces and will support them through their current and future difficulties. It is on their behalf and on the behalf of future soldiers that we ask for peace now. A peaceful solution to the current situation will set a precedent for peaceful resolution of all future conflicts. Missoula is the home of many diverse people. We, as a community, respect and embrace each and every one among us and hope to build a strong sense of community based on this respect. We do not wish to lose a single member of this tight-knit community to an avoidable war. Through our commitment to peace, we hope to set an example for peaceful negotiations and solutions throughout the United States and the world. Missoula city and county peace officers have helped maintain peace and harmony between people of vastly differing opinions during extremely stressful times. The Missoula County Commissioners have supported peace in word and action and have helped create a true public by providing space for peaceful expression. The foundation is laid for our community to grow together into a coherent unit based on peace. Thank you.
My name is Jacqueline Cross. I live at 7600 Zog Drive in Missoula. To this end, we declare Missoula, Montana to be a peace sanctuary. To be a peace sanctuary, Missoula must refuse to allow its institutions to be used as tools of the federal government's military machine. City and county peace officers must not help federal agencies enforce laws that violate the constitutional rights and/or endanger the lives of any of its citizens. The county must not voluntarily cooperate with the Selective Service by supplying the names of draft-aged citizens or voluntarily aid federal authorities in pursuing violators of the laws of that agency. Likewise, Missoula County schools at all levels shall not provide names of students to the Selective Service. Students shall have equal access to military and non-military options and counselors. The option of alternative financial aid to needy students whose consciences do not allow them to comply with Selective Service requirements shall be explored. Further, Missoula County shall post signs at county and city gateways and other strategic locations welcoming people to our peace sanctuary. In order to further enhance the city's focus on peace and in order to hear all of its diverse citizens, the town and county shall sponsor democratic, community-wide forums to discuss issues of war and peace on a regular basis. A network for liaison between community peace leaders and elected officials shall be established. Missoula County, in an attempt to further peace, shall work to develop local policies aimed at decreasing the need for the spoils of war and thereby eliminate war itself. To help alleviate the current situation and as an example for national policy, Missoula shall immediately develop its own local energy policy designed to reduce its dependence on foreign oil. This policy shall place emphasis on mass transit, use of bicycles, and other forms of alternative transportation. Missoula, Montana stands up for its community that desires peace throughout the world. We speak up now and forever for peace and hope that our nation will follow us.
Bernadette Alou, 445 Burlington, Missoula, Montana. I am greatly saddened and deeply disturbed by the reaction of some students on my campus to the recent die-in at the Grizzly game covered by national television. One young, read draftable man, stated that if his friends had not restrained him, they would, in quotes, have beat the-- he would, I'm sorry, in quotes, have beat the hell out of them, referring, of course, to the U M. students who stood, or rather, laid down against current U.S. foreign policy. And yet, I cannot really hold this young man, a freshman in marketing, accountable for his reasoning, read, brainwashing by the government, and his feelings, read, media manipulation, read, brainwashing by the government. His role models, Rambo, Top Gun, George Bush, read, adolescent, ejaculatory, grandiose and violent, are now teaching him that it is just ethical and appropriate to use extreme violence for the purpose of conflict resolution. Make no mistake about it, read Nixon, I am certainly not in support of Saddam Hussein's acts of aggression against the Kuwaiti people. I do, however, empathize with his feelings of frustration with the Kuwaiti government, read. Find out, a little-known fact is that the government of Kuwait had been consistently violating its treaties with Iraq. This is a vital distinction. It is time we stopped automatically equating people with government. When was the last time you gave yourself a $20,000 raise? In light of the recent acts of aggression on the parts of the Iraqi, Soviet, and American governments, I do not think it is unreasonable for a handful of outraged citizens to lay down in protest on a gymnasium war, I mean, gymnasium floor, for 10 minutes for the world to see. It is clear that the world is not seeing that we, the people, are now being subjected to a war without our governments having fully exhausted all possible means to prevent that war. Or maybe we're pretending not to see. Or seeing and feeling helpless, impotent, numb. Or tragically seeing and not giving a damn. Well, some of us really do give a damn. We care about our lives and your lives, read, all soldiers all over the world. We care about the lives of all of our sisters and brothers, the buffalo, dolphins, whales, wolf, bear, caribou, and all animals, plants, rocks, and streams. This is not only a war about oil, read, mass ecological devastation, mass murder, and quite possibly your life. It is a world war with grave implications for the survival of this planet. Read Revelations, it's in the Bible. We are one species, one world. Wake up, America. Read my lips. This is not a football game. Demand to exercise your rights as citizens to influence the actions of your government today, please, before it's too late. As of this writing, we still have a chance, read peace. Please bring home our troops, read, a way of talking about young men and women so that they seem a bit less human to us. That way, we don't get so freaked out when they begin arriving home in body bags. Please let it be noted that although I disagree with the anti-dissonant sentiment of some of the U.S. students on my campus, I fully support their right and duty to express their opinions. And while I, as a fifth-year clinical psychology graduate student, am fully aware of the need of all beings to express their emotions as constructively as possible, injuries to other beings are unnecessary, unkind, and downright unethical. It is critically important now that all of our voices be heard. I'm sorry, I lost my place.
Your three minutes.
Okay, I'm almost done. Including the radical left, including the enlisted Marine, the potential draftee, the mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, and friends of our troops, I am well aware of the tone of my own voice at this time, scared, saddened, hopeful, because there isn't any other rational choice, and yes, outraged at the current policies of my government. It's a curious phenomenon that while governments are not always responsible to their people, we must always be responsible for them. In exercising that responsibility, it is vital that we do not censure each other as we sift through mountains of information and misinformation to arrive at relative truth. I want to listen, and am actively engaged in listening, to the wisdom of others in my community, so that I may modify my position as new trustworthy information is made available to me. And it is my hope that you, the American people, will do the same. Let us not forget the word democracy, and may our Creator bless us all, read, all life forms on the face of this planet. Thank you.
My name is Mark Healan, 233 Dixon, lifelong member of the community. I would like to stand in opposition to some of the statements that have been read earlier. I don't have a prepared statement, I apologize for that. However, I feel that it is extremely important, as a member of the community, to realize that approximately 80% of the population in Missoula County has indicated their strong support of the current status in the Far East. Consequently, I feel it is important, as a member of this community, to stand and make known the fact that the silent majority were out there, and it's important for you folks to realize that not everyone in this community is going to throw potatoes at individuals at basketball games and whatnot, but it is important to realize that we do stand with President Bush and the current foreign policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Ames Reinhold. I live at 3035 Eden. I'm here to speak on the Greens' position for the Gulf War. I'm going to read the first half, and Rich Doyle will read the second. We feel the need to publicly state our position on the Gulf War in order to make there what the Missoula Greens believe, so that the community can distinguish the Greens' actions from other actions for peace. This is not to say that other groups or individual peace activities are wrong, mistaken, or contrary. Missoula has a widespread and diverse peace community which initiates many diverse actions. The Missoula Greens believe in creating a green society, one that is sustainable for our children's children's children. Such a society can only be sustainable if it is peaceful and nonviolent, ecologically wise, economically and socially just, and a grassroots democracy. We condemn the president initiation of a war as a step backward in our world's need of progress towards peaceful conflict resolution. We cannot see how violence and war begats nonviolence and peace. We support any individual or group's creative, nonviolent action which brings this war to an end sooner. The Greens, however, are a creative, not a destructive movement. Indeed, it is a war, rapacious development, pollution, economic injustice, racism, and oppression that is destructive in our world. Our holistic view teaches us the interrelatedness of problems. We recognize that this war is but a large symptom of a deeply pervasive and multifaceted problem in our society. As we work in building of a greener planet, our response to the current war must also address some of the deep causes of this particular war. And because the Missoula Greens are committed to this, our place, our community, by thinking globally and acting locally, we ask the following of you, our local representatives. One, since we Missoulians are outraged, dismayed, and offended by President Bush's aggression, we want you to pass a resolution condemning his starting war instead of pursuing a peaceful resolution. Two, since Missoula as a community opposes war, and this war in particular, in the tradition of our nuclear free zone, we ask that Missoula be declared a sanctuary from war and support the drafted resolution. We particularly share support for the women and men serving in the Gulf and strongly agree with the need for a local energy policy. To that end, we also ask-- I'll let Rich finish.
Hello, my name is Rich Doyle. I live at 740 East Front. You can read along with me if you like, there's a copy of this that each of you have. So we would like to ask the Missoula Greens, since our ravenous need for oil is one underlying force driving this and future wars, as well as the destruction of our environment, we ask all Missoulians to reduce and stop if possible automobile use. Park your cars for peace. We recognize that not everyone can always do without cars. Given the current transportation system, and we are not interested in casting blame on car drivers, we believe people can responsibly make choices for themselves. And then four, to improve the accessibility of our current transportation system, given the emergency our country and world faces, we ask Missoula to provide free bus service and to extend the bus service in time and frequency and area served. Our society has heavily subsidized automobiles for too long. We must put our resources to better use. To pay for the free bus service, we propose a wartime moratorium on all new road construction and limiting road repairs to only those needed to facilitate bicycle, bus, and emergency vehicle traffic. Five, many Missoulians own bicycles, let's make it safer to use them. We urge you to give priority to bicycles by designating routes or traffic systems which require automobiles to conform to the needs of bicyclists rather than vice versa. This can be done by creating safe bicycle lanes, bicycle-only routes, slow streets, and other incentives for bicycle use. The Missoula Greens also recommend that the mayor forego his city car and that the city instead provide him with a bicycle, helmet, and bus pass. And recently, a group of Missoulians called for a town meeting and demanded public space to discuss the war and the constitutional crisis in our country. The fact that no such place was available to them suggests the need for a Missoula community center, a public place where people can meet for community discussions at any time. We ask you to provide one. So we are asking you to do only these things which you have the power to do. Help create, help Missoula create a sustainable, green community. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments this evening? If not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Chuck? Nothing on the consent agenda. Committee reports. Cable TV Committee, Mr. Hermes.
The committee recommends that Mayor Dan Kim must write a letter to Satcom in response to Satcom's franchise offer. The mayor's letter should indicate that the city would like to have another negotiating meeting. I would say we--
Any discussion? Mr. Rice.
What would be the reason for having such a meeting?
The meeting would be to visit with Les Hilliard on his stance with the negotiating a cable franchise agreement with Satcom and see what his feelings are and further explore the opportunity to come to a franchise agreement with him.
What is the date of the expiration of his business license?
I believe the end of February, Fred.
I don't want to sound like George Bush, but I think that it would be important to, rather than to give a blanket window here, that perhaps we should specify a particular window into which these, this discussion could occur so we have adequate time to deliberate about what we intend to do. I would propose that we try to establish a meeting by, I can't remember how February looks, but I think it's like the ninth of February is the end of the second week, something like that, so that we would be able to have a couple of weeks to decide what we're going to do after we've had the meeting with Mr. Hilliard.
Mrs. Shaver.
The negotiations, as I recall, with TCI took years and years and years. I was not a member of that committee, but I did attend some of the meetings. And despite the fact that there were times when we believed that they were not negotiating in good faith, I don't remember any time that we held their business license hostage to the agreement. Am I wrong? Did we ever do that?
Anyone recall that? Jim?
No.
I don't understand why we would try to do it with this company.
Mr. Rice.
We have been negotiating with Mr. Hilliard for, in a parallel fashion, throughout the entire time that we have been negotiating with TCI. The nature of those negotiations have been different since the franchise agreement with TCI occurred, but Mr. Hilliard has been party privy to the discussions. He received the franchise solicitations that TCI received and has not responded in anywhere near the, I guess, the fashion that TCI or any of the entities that preceded TCI have responded to the city, at least in the history that I have of working with this committee, which is admittedly short. It's only in the last seven years of the last 15 that this has been an item, but I think that nonetheless, that a meeting in May was held where the balance of the, an agreement was reached, and then it took until the last couple of weeks for there to be the response that we have been, that the committee is currently dealing with. That looks to me like about seven months between responses, and I think that the letter from Ron Wheeler is unfortunately apt, even if we don't choose to take the action that MCAT would like us to see. There is no question that if it weren't the case out of Alabama or some other place, it would be, or, excuse me, Arkansas, it would be another case that he would be hanging his hat on. So I think that we, you know, and it may not be the council's desire to act on the letter that we wrote eight months ago, but it is, it seems to me, appropriate to have adequate time to decide whether we want to act on that, on that letter. And so I would propose that we meet in the first, have that meeting sometime in the first full week of February.
Mr. McLaughlin.
I agree with Bob's comments and Donna's comments and Fred's comments to a point. I think it's imperative that we negotiate with this cable company up in the Rattlesnake for two reasons. The provider doesn't like the contract that we now have. He wants, he wants to work it out a different way, and the subscribers don't want it to begin with. Now, any time that you get somebody who provides something that doesn't want to provide it to somebody who doesn't want it, I think this council needs to be very careful in how it approaches, approaches the problem. And I think negotiating with a settlement through that in time, and if it takes time, it takes time, I think that that's how we ought to do this. At the neighborhood meeting, I understand that a show of hands as to those people who wanted MCAT and the Rattlesnake and those people who didn't showed about a three-to-one margin opposed to putting it in up there. And I think with that kind of a margin, I think that we ought to, we ought to provide, proceed slowly, deliberately, make sure we do this right. And I don't believe in holding this gentleman's business license hostage.
Any further discussion, Mr. Hermes?
As I visit with the mayor, I think it would be wise to respond to him in a letter indicating that we don't necessarily agree with his position, but that we'd like to visit. I do think the Supreme Court case in Arkansas is reason to wait and proceed with caution, as we discussed last week in the meeting. And I think it'd just be prudent on our part to take a little extra time, and I think a little unreasonable to pull his business license at the end of February. And again, we did talk about that in the meeting, so I think Dan could handle it pretty well with a letter, and I have a feeling that Les would be willing to meet with Dan or the council, but I'm not too sure about the first week in February, but that's something Dan could check on.
I think it's important to note that, first of all, Fred is right that we have been negotiating with Mr. Hilliard essentially since the time that we began negotiating with TCI's predecessors, so it's not that we've begun these negotiations. Negotiations with Mr. Hilliard got nowhere for many, many years, and the day that they began to get somewhere was the day that we said that we were willing to not issue another business license. In fact, it was five minutes after that that the negotiations finally, after all of those years, began to get serious. And at that point, Mr. Hilliard did, in effect, within the next hour after that was conveyed to them, come very close to reaching an agreement with the city, and it seemed clear that we had an agreement in principle. Unfortunately, after that, they, they got busy, and I think that they also probably contacted some other lawyers, and as the months went by, they decided that they were not as interested in entering into an agreement. My concern is that if we back off of the position that we have taken, that we're simply asking that we not reach any agreement at all, frankly, I'd be very leery of suggesting that any of us spend the time or the money on another negotiating session unless we're willing to maintain a fairly firm stance. If their position is that this Arkansas case is relevant, which I think there's very substantial reason to doubt that it is, since it doesn't arise under the Cable Company Act, doesn't have anything to do with franchises, has to do with a state tax on cable companies that doesn't have to do with franchises, but giving them the benefit of the doubt that there is some relevance to this Supreme Court case, it seems to me that they should be willing to enter into a one-year franchise with us until we can find out what the relevance of that is. So I'm willing to negotiate a one-year franchise, I'm willing to ask them to come here to negotiate a one-year franchise, but I'm not willing to ask them to come here just for the, for the pleasure of meeting with them one more time.
Mr. Wood.
So are we going to reject this, their agreement, or say that we don't like their agreement that they sent out?
Oh, their, their agreement that they sent out is, is no agreement at all. It's, it's nothing that the city can agree to. It wasn't intended to be, I don't believe.
Mrs. Shea.
I think the mayor and the city of Missoula has done a very good job and has a good track record with negotiation, negotiating this past year. There were many issues. Now, this is cable television that we're talking about, and I understand, because I was at that Rattlesnake meeting, and there was a great number of people who were perhaps questioning whether they wanted the service or didn't want the service, so there's a lot of things to talk about. I think the meeting is a good idea in the spirit of negotiation and cooperation. It's not going to take that much longer to do that, and I think the extra time will perhaps help us to be productive. I don't think pulling the business license, I don't think there's enough reason to do that right now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Finance and license?
I'll handle this first one here. This first item should have probably been on the consent agenda, but I just forgot to do it. Although a quorum was not present, the members in attendance recommend the council approve the community development block grant, development agreement for Shady Grove site, and authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign the agreement, and I so move.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Rice.
Aside from the question of precedence of this motion and the next one, Chuck, it has been represented in various contexts that with the completion of this particular agreement, that Shady Grove can be taken off of the finance agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. We did not indicate held in committee.
I'm sure you don't want to talk about it a little bit.
We're going to miss it.
Pretty drastic step. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
I do have one minor correction that came up late last week. If you look at the agreement, you'll notice that Section 1 says, "The city hereby agrees to grant Lot 1 of Eagle Watch Estates to ASI, which is Accessible Space Incorporated, for the price of $1 via warranty deed." And then it goes on further. Originally, the, the contract said that the donation of land would go to Montana Mobility Imperate Housing, and your Exhibit B, the warranty deed, still says Montana Mobility Imperate Housing. The way the chain of title has to work for the HUD requirements is that Accessible Space Incorporated of Minnesota is the actual sponsor of the federal grant application, so the land has to run through their ownership, and then they ultimately have to donate it to Montana Mobility Imperate Housing. So in order to make the agreement consistent with Exhibit B, Exhibit B should be to Accessible Space Incorporated rather than Montana Mobility Imperate Housing.
Okay. Call the roll.
Yeah, I'll accept that.
ASI is still a nonprofit corporation?
Yeah, yes, of Minnesota, however.
Yeah.
Okay, on the agreement, and Jack accepted that minor modification. Mike Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Twelve zero.
Motion carries.
Second part of it is, although a quorum was not present, the members in attendance recommended that the council approve the declaration of permanent public eastmans established in the public trust and authorize the mayor and the finance officer clerk to sign the declaration, and I so move.
Discussion. Roll call.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Twelve zero.
Motion carries.
The next one, Chuck, wasn't listed on the agenda, but I think there's another item there. Request for additional expenditures from the health insurance benefit fund for the summary plan document costs, and I so move.
Okay, I think it is on the agenda.
Is it? All right. Although a quorum was not present, the members in attendance recommend the council approve spending an additional $1,000 for the purpose of flourishing health insurance summary plan document books, and I so move.
Discussion. Mr. Rice.
This is probably picking the proverbial nit, but the motion in committee was spending up to $1,000 with the vain hope, probably, that we would not have to spend that much. The original request was, I believe, for $990.
Without objection, the motion will so read.
Yeah, no objection here.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Claims. Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommends the council approve claims totaling $108,770.29, and I so move.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Sampson.
Next is the meeting that we had this evening, and the first on the agenda is SID 495 bond contract award. Committee recommends the council suspend the rules to consider the sale of SID 495 bonds. I would so move.
This is the motion to suspend the rules? Correct. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
The next, committee recommends the council award the sale contract for SID 495 bonds to Piper Jaffrey and Hopwood Incorporated for the true interest cost of 7.14578. Return bid security at the appropriate time and authorize the mayor and staff to sign all necessary documents, and I would so move. There was two bids, this one and the one from DA Davidson. This is somewhat better bid than the other. They're under what we had anticipated. We'd done most of the calculations on eight percent bids, and this is substantially under that, so I would recommend the approval.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
I will just point out that if there is discussion about the contract award for the construction of Southwest Missoula sanitary sewer system under Public Works, depending on how the motion coming out of that committee is voted upon, you might need to revise or revisit this motion. However, this motion is predicated on passage of the motion coming out of Public Works Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Twelve zero.
That is the end of this evening's report.
Traditional review, anything?
No, not.
PAC?
I have one comment. I believe that if Larry made the comments under number three that he made, that it is not possible that he was absent. I believe it is possible, however, I was absent.
You were, I wasn't.
PAC. Mr. McLaughlin.
Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommends that council approve the revised agreement to extend preliminary plat approval subject to the city attorney's review and approval. Item four on page one is changed to state, "The subdivider agrees to meet the city of Missoula subdivision and development standards in effect at the time of the preliminary plat approval and subject to all conditions of preliminary plat approval. At the time, each phase or portion thereof is submitted for final review. The Office of Community Development and the city engineer shall review the final plat to ensure the intent of the PUD planned unit development relative to the current regulations is met, and I would so move."
Discussion. Mr. Rice.
How will we, so, in other words, it's up to the city engineer, Larry, that, to determine whether the intent has been met?
It's up, Fred, it's up to the OCD and the city engineer to determine if, in fact, the problem that we have here is some of these, these PUDs are going for terms of ten and twenty years. And standards change in the future. We anticipate changes all the time. And the idea behind this, this changed language is to ensure that if changes occur during the development of the PUD, that each portion that comes in after the changes, after standard changes, that the PUD meets the new standards, not the old standards that were in place when it was first approved.
Well, yeah, I do understand that, but the question is, how, the decision then can be made by the OCD and the, and the, and the city engineer without bringing it back to council?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shea?
Pass.
Wood?
Pass.
Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Would the passes care to change their vote beginning with Shea?
No.
No change. Wood?
No.
No change. Nine, one, two.
Is that it, Larry?
No, I'm waiting for you to say the motion's carried.
The motion's carried.
Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommends the council approve the revised zoning density allocation agreement subject to the city attorney's review and approval, and I would so move.
Discussion. Fred?
I was just trying to remember all my questions here. This particular document, there were a number of questions that came up in the earlier discussion of it, Larry, which had to do with the transfer of development rights, et cetera. Have we determined as a result now that the development rights rest with the property?
Doris, would you care to comment on that, please, and go through this for Fred?
I only have two, I only have two questions.
Okay, while you're coming up, the changes that were made in, in the page were on just some language changes from county to city.
Yeah, I understood, yeah, I understood. Those seem to me to be sort of minor points when we were talking about it.
Those were, okay.
Right.
The rest, I'll let Doris speak to it.
Doris Fisher from the Office of Community Development. Fred, the document that you see tonight is simply a zoning density allocation agreement with no discussion any longer of sewer development rights. What was needed in order for the PUD, PUD zoning to become effective were a couple of conditions, and one of the conditions was the execution of a zoning density allocation agreement that holds the developer to a certain number of housing units in not only the PUD portion, but in adjacent 3.37 acre reserve. The discussion of sewer development rights was really not necessary to the zoning density allocation agreement, so it is just not dealt with in this particular document.
Okay, so that, all of that language is gone now?
That's right.
Anything further?
Then my second question was, is not relevant.
All right.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Lucino?
I would like to know if the council would like to have a brief update on the subcommittee discussing the downtown riverfront. I thought I was. Larry, would you be interested in hearing that update on the riverfront and neighborhood plans?
I would as soon as we vote.
Yeah, after, after you're done.
You bet. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, please call the roll. Thank you, Doris.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shea?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
Twelve zero.
Motion carries.
I would then turn the floor over to the chair of the subcommittee on the downtown and the south side plan.
Mr. Lucino.
This particular group, this subcommittee, has been meeting since the middle of October, faithfully, generally once a week for two hours. A lot of hours have gone into discussing the two respective plans. This group's represented by the Downtown Merchants Association, the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, a few realtors, a representative from the University of Montana, and several representatives from the South Side Historic Neighborhood Association. We hope to have something to turn back to the PAZ committee within a few weeks, perhaps two to three weeks. And basically, where we stand is you're going to see some revised language in both plans. The committee has made an attempt to arrive at some consensus on languages that were seemingly incompatible with one another. There are some issues that the committee cannot agree on, and those primarily relate to the character of the proposed South Side Park as initially designed by the MRA, and the location of a potential footbridge. These are the two issues that most of the debate has taken place on. And what you will see in a final forum, I'm not sure yet, but rest assured, it will not be, you won't see a unanimity on these two points. And you can expect it to go back to the MRA board. The MRA board is talking about establishing and appointing a citizen steering committee that will have representatives from the community at large to put in their input on some of these issues that the subcommittee cannot agree on. And then the MRA board will make some recommendations, and then hence back to the city council. So that's where we stand.
Thank you, Bob. Public Works Committee, Mr. Potts.
The first item on the agenda is the contract award for the construction of the Southwest Missoula sanitary sewer Phase 1, East Cold Springs. The bids all came in way over, and the committee met this half, this evening, and they had three, three alternatives. I think you have a copy of those on the desk. And the committee recommended that council hold the January 14, 1991 Southwest Missoula sewer project construction bids open for further review and consideration of award during the 90-day bid consideration period ending April 14, 1991. And authorize the staff to prepare and advertise revised bid specifications and commit to do the Southwest Missoula project at least with the lowest responsible bidder of those contractors submitting bids at the January 14, 1991 bid opening. If a lower responsible bid is not received after the bid specification, after bid specifications are revised, it will be advertised and bid, and I so move.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Rice.
I'm somewhat concerned about this date. I believe it was the day that the Titanic sank.
Is there any further discussion? Bruce?
Bruce Bender, city engineer. I just happened to notice that, we ought to be more specific in our wording there. Call that the, the East Cold Springs sewer project of the Southwest Missoula sewer project.
Or we could call it Southwest Missoula Project Phase 1. That's, that's the language we used earlier, I think.
But it also says East Cold Springs on that title, too, on the contract document. So we ought to be, because right now, we're talking about the whole Southwest Missoula project.
Without objection, we'll change it to like that. Any discussion? I can't tell by looking whether this requires a roll call or not. Chuck? Well, it's not true that we're not doing anything. We are committing. That's the only thing that I'm concerned about. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Is that it? Mr. Potts?
Mr. Mayor, there was another item on the agenda that had been, wanted to be held, and an older person asked me if I would move that we suspend the rules and consider a resolution that I have here.
I want to describe what the resolution is about, so people know what they're voting to suspend the rules about. This is the Razor Drive.
Razor Drive Railroad Crossing.
All those in favor of suspending the rules to consider a resolution on closure of Razor Drive, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion to suspend the rules carries. Mr. Potts?
Does the author of the resolution wish to read it, or shall I?
The author, authors are, please chief overhopper and fire chief, check.
Very well, I'll, I tried to grope you in, I guess I can't do it. Didn't seem to work. This is a resolution requesting that the city, that the Missoula County Commissioners not close Razor Drive Railroad Crossing, or that if the county commissioners do close Razor Drive Railroad Crossing, that all owner alternatives be examined first. Whereas, in the judgment of the city council, and the Razor, the Razor Drive Railroad Crossing should remain open with some of the reasons and alternates to follow. By closing this crossing, increased traffic will be placed on Reserve Streets, Scott Street Overpass, and surrounding residential streets to prevent increased use by hazardous material trucks on Scott Street in a residential neighborhood and through a school zone. and through a school zone. The approach road from Stockyard Road onto Reserve Street is not conducting to trucks because of the Reserve Street overpass grade. The interest of the property owners on both sides of said crossing would be the best served by not closing this crossing. An alternative of longer crossing arms or crossing arms that meet in the middle from both sides could be installed and would keep motors from driving around them. Whereas, if the County Commissioners do decide to close the crossing, let it not be closed until all alternatives have been explored, including the recommendation of the Disaster Planning Committee be resolved for use of this crossing for emergency needs, exploration of the possibility of installing a traffic control signal at Reserve Street and Old Stockyard Road intersection, that restrictions of the hazardous materials may be accomplished through city ordinance on Scott Street. That the City Council, County Commissioners, and State of Montana and Montana Rail Link work together to consider the future construction of an overpass between Scott Street and Reserve Street overpasses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Missoula City Council requests that the Missoula County Commissioners not close Razor Drive Railroad Crossing at this time. And be it further resolved that the City Clerk is hereby instructed to certify a copy of said resolution, so entered upon said minutes, to deliver a copy of this resolution to the Missoula County Commissioners, and I shall move.
Discussion, Mrs. Schaefer.
This affects not only our ward, but a lot of area in residence that use this crossing and businesses. And I want to thank the police chief and the fire chief for taking the time this last week to write out this resolution. It's a very, it's not an easy situation, but I think that this is the best solution. I also want to thank the County Commissioners for keeping the public hearing open. They did have a very well-attended public hearing last Wednesday, and agreed to keep it open for further comments, and thus allowing not only the city time to work up this resolution, but other people to comment as well. I urge that you vote for this resolution.
Any further discussion? When Chief Oberhoffer told me that he had been requested to prepare this resolution, he vigorously, vigorously denied that drafting resolutions was any part of his stock in trade. I think that he's done a pretty good job here, but I might ask for permission, if you do pass this, that we reorder things a little bit here. I think that we can maybe put it in a little bit different order, but I think it's mostly just a matter of renumbering the whereses and so on. If that might be part of the motion here, I appreciate it. Any further discussion, Donna?
And you're revising, you're not going to make this any weaker, are you?
No, Donna, what I was, what I was suggesting that we do is have two now, now therefore be it resolves, I mean, I guess we would end up with three. Right now, we have one, that the Council requests that the Commissioners not close the crossing at this time. I think if you look up above to the second whereas, that that probably really should be another, now therefore be it resolved, that if it is closed, that they look at some alternatives. Larry?
I would suggest that we do that, Dan, and that we pass it subject to the approval of the revision, subject to the approval of the revision by the President of the Council. Mr. Rice?
This has to be into them by Wednesday, right? It seems to me you should just let, I think if what Dan suggests is all that needs to be done, it could be done relatively quickly and ready for public safety, and it seems to me that since that's the war of public work, since it's been coming out, that's where the interest has been lying, that it could be approved, subject to those, to the approval by whatever committee it's going to go back to, so that the people who've been working on it can still work on it.
That sounds fine to me. I don't have any interest in shaping it, other than for stylistic purposes. Mr. Sampson?
I'm in favor of the resolution, but I would wonder if it would be possible if we could get, at least from my information, copies of the public hearing, or information on the public hearing that the county had. I've been in the midst of this a couple of times before, and I would kind of like to revisit the information that both sides have on it.
We can sure check into that. I don't know if they've got transcripts yet of their public hearing, but we can try to find that.
Later would be all right, primarily for information.
Do you understand the motion, then, that the resolution would be adopted subject to some reorganization, which in turn would be subject to approval of the Public Works Committee?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Make it Public Works.
Public Works.
Even though the public people drafted it, we'll make it into Road Cross.
If there is no further discussion, then please call the roll.
Resolution as amended. Potts.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rice.
I think we were supposed to have a public hearing before that, but I'm in favor of
Sampson.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Shea.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hermes.
Yes.
Lucino.
Yes.
McLaughlin.
Yes.
Twelve zero.
Motion carries. All right. We'll go now to comments of council members. Begin with Mr. Potts.
No comment.
Mr. Sampson?
It's not exactly nice to be back from the sunny south, but it was an enjoyable vacation, and I see that most of the things were still here that was here when I left, so I guess I didn't miss much.
Mr. Reedy.
I feel obligated to answer some of the people in the crowd, and I respect, deeper respect their right to make statements of this. I'm an overseas veteran. My dad fought in World War I.
Excuse me just a second, Jack. Maybe if you could move the microphone a little bit between you and the audience, since I think you're kind of facing toward them. There you go.
And is laying in the grave on account of World War I now. I don't exactly appreciate the doughboy being desecrated. People have called me at the house and said, "Jack, why don't you speak up?" I was opposed to Bush's action originally. I voted for the peace initiative, but now that we're in war, and not officially at war, but the fighting started, I see no purpose in having demonstrations. I think it gives aid and comfort to Saddam Hussein and not to our troops. On another matter, I read in the paper that Missoula is moving in the way of a Berkeley-type city. It's going to have to go over my path, because I won't go for it. I also want to emphasize the fact that not everybody in the Democratic Party are liberals, and I'm certainly not one.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I have to agree with what Jack has said, wholeheartedly. Items have come out in the news today that further reinforce my belief that Saddam Hussein is in fact a madman, that needs to be dealt with by the world community. United States, or United Nations Resolution 678 is supposed to deal with that, with that situation. I believe that President Bush used every means possible he could to avoid this war right up to the 26th hour. It was told to him that Arab pride would force Saddam Hussein to wait until the deadline for war, and then may start moving after he has proven he could stood up, stand up to the world. He didn't do that the first two days. He didn't start moving at all, leaving no choice but for the United Nations forces, not just the United States forces, but the United Nations forces, to try and free Kuwait. Problems in the world today are created by people like this, people like Saddam Hussein, and people who are creating war crimes this very instant. He has taken the flyers that have been captured. He refuses at this time to comply with the Geneva Convention Accords, which he has signed, his country has signed. He's placing the captured prisoners of war on targets, military targets that the United States is going to attack, to use them as human shields. That's against the Geneva Conventions. That's a war crime. So he has a continuing, continuing record of being just exactly what the world thinks he is. And I'm proud of the United States and proud of the world itself. Sometimes worlds have, world agencies have to go to war, hopefully not often, to make this a better world to live in. The United Nations was created for peace. The United Nations is striving to attain peace, and sometimes this has to be done. I read an article, a letter to the editor in the paper, and on Sunday, and I'm sorry I didn't get the gentleman's name who wrote it, but he had a quote in there, "For those who do not believe that we should police the entire world, in Germany they came for the communists, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a communist. Then they came for the Jews, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a Jew. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I didn't speak up because I wasn't a trade unionist. Then they came for the Catholics, and I didn't speak up because I was a Protestant. Then they came for me, and by that time, no one was left to speak up at all." And that's a quote from Martin Niemoller from 1892 to 1984.
Mr. Hermes.
As a student of the University of Montana and a graduate of UN, I wasn't surprised at the die-in that occurred at the basketball game. I guess I was disappointed that it didn't occur on Saturday, because what that told me is that the only reason it did occur was because ESPN was there. And I found that a little bit hypocritical on the part of the people that did that.
Harrison?
No comment.
Mrs. Craig?
The war has brought about so many emotions that nothing is very clear anymore. Optimistically, I hope that Sudan is surprised at our strength and our determination, and would welcome a chance to negotiate. I would like to see us back off and give negotiations a try again.
Mr. Lucino?
I appreciate the citizens coming out tonight who have spoken their views about our involvement in the war in the Middle East. I read the article where, Dan, you were quoted in terms of your response to the die-in at the university. For a mayor who was very concerned about the image of Missoula nationally, I could only imagine that as each time it was replayed on various stations throughout the country, you probably were wincing. I don't think it accurately reflects Missoula, but on the other hand, maybe it does. You have talked about how diverse we are. You talk about how we're a community who likes to live well. I don't know if that shows that we are living well. And as I listen to all of you speak tonight from both sides, I wonder to myself, how can we respect each other's views and tolerate each other in a peaceful way, in a way that affirms the troops that are there, that doesn't hurt their morale, in a way that doesn't give encouragement to Mr. Hussein? And I, all I can do is to ask that all of us respect each other's views. We do have a right to assemble, we have freedom to speak, and when we do in the coming weeks, I just trust that that doesn't infringe on another citizen's right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness here in Missoula. And I'm, the more this war goes on, the more sober I seem to get. I feel real tense about what will happen to our own country as a result of it. I'm tense about the economic impact on our country, a country that has a large trade deficit already. And seeing the actions of Mr. Hussein as recently as today, and how he's treating our POWs, we really don't know what he's capable of doing. And I can only think of the worst, and so I'm really frightened about what can happen to the lives of Americans over there. And so I, I'm just sitting here feeling sober, and I'd like to encourage all of us to, as Dan likes to say, as Mayor Chemist likes to say, to live well together during this time of crisis.
Mr. Wood?
No comment.
Mrs. Schaefer?
No comment.
In every place except for Arizona, New Hampshire, and Montana, the third Monday in January is Martin Luther King Day. And I'd like to ask that we take the balance of the time set aside for my comments to reflect on Dr. King's life achievements and his message to us all.
I received a letter this week from a constituent, Bill Clark, who's the president of the Rattlesnake Valley Alliance. Copies also went to Nick Kaufman, the mayor, and councilperson Fred Rice. I'm just going to read this, it's fairly short. It's regarding the use of Meadows North Walkway funds for rattlesnake traffic study. Dear Elaine, I've heard from reports of the City Council meeting that you were assuming that the Meadows North funds for the proposed walkway along Rattlesnake Drive should be used for the proposed rattlesnake traffic study instead. I'm totally opposed to the diversion of these funds to the traffic study. My reasons are as follows. Number one, the subdivision's density, the traffic it will generate, and its taking over of Smokes pasture, were all very unpopular parts of this proposal. The negotiations with Nick Kaufman had with the RVA not to oppose it were based on amenities that we were able to obtain from the subdivision, with the walkway being a significant portion of this. Rattlesnake's drives, problems at that location are presently very severe, and will be significantly worsened by 79 homes. That we were able to negotiate the walkway is a significant advantage to all uses of the Rattlesnake Drive at that location. Number two, the city annex the Rattlesnake for the taxes it would obtain. It is the city's responsibility to meet the general burdens of administering the rattlesnake, such as a traffic study, out of general funds, and not by siphoning off funds for negotiated improvements related to specific impacts due to particular subdivisions. Respectfully, Bill Clark. Now, first of all, public record reflects the actual testimony of last week's discussion, and we had quite a bit of discussion about this. It's important to note that I never It's important to note that I never suggested that the traffic study be funded by the Meadows North Fund. What I said is that the Meadows North was intended to be used for a trail system. Let me be more accurate. A walkway system, along rattlesnake, which I support, where the road is very narrow, particularly to the north, and for children to walk back and forth from school. Although the discussion has been limited to committee meetings, et cetera, there's been no final decision, as Joe Aldigary pointed out last week, on the, on the use of these funds. And two, there's been no designation of which fund would be used to pay for the RFP traffic study for the rattlesnake. This determination will come later on, too. Now, I understand it's possible to misunderstand what people say. It happens a lot, particularly with complex issues. However, I feel it's critical to use careful communication rather than assume what other people may or may not be saying. I think this is true not only for those of us who are in the council, but for people who may be watching. If you catch just a glimpse of a particular topic and just some of the discussion on TV, and you have a question, it's important to call us. Really, that's why we're here, and that's part of our job, to check it out first before you write lots of letters. And closer to home, there's the response and feelings about the war in the Gulf by our community has been diverse and very powerful. I've received many calls, and most people have very strong feelings generally about the war, and specifically about local issues as to either keep the street open or to close the street. Many people want to keep it open, and yet there are also lots of people who feel strongly that the time is indeed not about business as usual, and there should be some symbol. I think one of, I got a very interesting call, and I felt it was a creative response from Irene Hiller, who's not in my ward. She lives over on Longstaff Street, and she suggested that Missoulians donate yellow lights to put on the Christmas tree that is already downtown. The wiring is already there, and keep that tree lit so that, and perhaps the lights could be donated. This would be remain lit, a symbol in support of hope and peace until the war is over.
Thank you. Is there any staff comment this evening?
One short comment. This year, we're revising the procedures on the capital improvement program process, and one of the changes that Mayor Chemist suggested was to do a poll or have the city council members actually rank and evaluate the projects prior to his consideration of the rankings as far as public support. We are going to be starting the meetings in February, and would encourage any council members who would like their evaluations, comments, or rankings to be considered, to turn those in prior to February.
Any other staff comment? Fred's invitation to reflect on Martin Luther King led me to think of something that I would like to say, if I can have permission to do that, and staff comment this evening, since I didn't take the opportunity earlier. Dr. King was, of course, greatly influenced by Gandhi. He was somebody that I had an opportunity to study quite a bit when I was in college. Gandhi can be understood in a lot of different ways, but I think the fundamental way for me of understanding Gandhi was the fact that, and this applies, I think, to Martin Luther King as well, the fact that they really believed that in, in attempting to make change in the world, that it was always essential, that you do that in a way that should leave the people that you're dealing with better human beings rather than worse human beings. As I've watched the struggle that Missoulians are going through now to clarify for themselves the positions that they'll take on the war, nothing seems to me more important to remember on this day of commemoration than that idea of trying to act in such a way that those people around us end up being better human beings as a result of it, rather than worse human beings. I'm appalled by the barbarity that we see in the response of the Iraqis to the capture of POWs, the fact that they have been willing to go beyond the Geneva Conventions to, to not realize that even within a war, that there are certain rules of civility that people have agreed to abide by. If there's anything that I think Missoula can hold itself proudly before the world about it is, are abiding by those rules of civility. I think it's why people enjoy coming to Missoula for things like the International Coral Festival. Not that we follow rules of civility, but that we are a civilized people, that when people come to visit us, that they know that they are in the presence of a civilized people. Frankly, I, I really don't think that there are many more civilized places in the world than Missoula. I think that we are really put to the test now to find out whether we can disagree sharply with each other and still maintain those rules of civility and, and standards of civility that we can so justly take pride of, pride in all the rest of the time. It is a test. It's a serious test, and the more committed people are to making change, the more serious that test becomes. If there's anything that I hope and pray for among Missoulians in this time, it is that we not forget that we are still neighbors. I've thought about the fact that people have come here to address us this evening and have sat around and listened to us talk about sewer projects and SIDs and so on. Those are boring subjects in a way, but they're subjects that make the community work. They're the kinds of things that we have to deal with day in and day out, but living with our neighbors are the sorts of things that we have to do day in and day out also. And I hope that Missoulians will continue to remember that above all, what we are is a community of neighbors. Is there any new business to come before the council this evening? If not, we'll go on to items to be referred. Chuck?
Request by Jeff Badnok regarding MRA Quarterly Report to Economic Development. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding claims to finance and license, and regarding journal vouchers to finance and license. Request by Jim Nugent regarding City Attorney's Quarterly Report to Judicial Review. Request by Catherine Evans regarding issuing building permit for unzoned property in railroad right-of-way at 500 East Alder, formerly the Big Bear Resources Building, to plat annexation and zoning. And then four requests by Chuck Gibson regarding confirmation of Larry Claussen as fire lieutenant, regarding confirmation of Jim Day as fire lieutenant, regarding confirmation of Dale Hove Day as fire lieutenant, and regarding confirmation of Duffy Kester as fire lieutenant, all to public safety.
Any other items to be referred? We will have a legislative caucus briefly following adjournment. If there is nothing further to come before the council. Oh, announcement of committee meeting, that's all right.
Finance and license?
Three o'clock on Thursday.
Judicial review?
No meeting.
Item three can be dropped. Plat annexation and zoning?
Donna, are you going to meet at four?
Yes.
For the four items?
Yes.
PAZ will be tomorrow at 4:10.
You think, you think a lot about confirmation, man.
I happen to like all four of these guys.
Public safety?
Tuesday at four.
At, at what time, Donna?
Four.
Four? Public works?
Tuesday at three. Very short, it's a long item.
Budget committee?
We've been waiting for Al to come back.
Gotta find another excuse.
Let's, let's discuss the budget immediately after finance on Thursday. Which would probably be at 3:30. I don't see anything very pressing on the finance schedule.
Cable TV committee? Conservation?
No. Al, two and five aren't even on there.
Pardon?
Two and five aren't even on there.
Okay, probably move it up from that. Be immediately following finance.
Economic development?
No.
Rules committee?
Jeff, do we need to have a rules committee? Have you gotten anything back?
I, I've only seen one, so we better wait another week till I get hold of the other.
Okay, no meeting, then.
Sewer rate subcommittee?
Larry? Larry? No meeting.
Sign ordinance subcommittee?
No meeting.
Sunlight Lands committee?
No meeting.
Okay. Finance and license will be Thursday at three. No judicial review. Plat annexation Tuesday at 4:10. Public safety Tuesday at four o'clock. Public works Tuesday at three o'clock. Budget committee Thursday after finance, and no meeting for cable TV, conservation, economic development, rules, sewer rate subcommittee, sign ordinance subcommittee, or sunlight land subcommittee.
Okay, we'll have a legislative caucus in about five minutes here. Meeting's adjourned.
There we go. Okay, we've got better cameras. Yes, sir. I'm thanking the mayor for doing what I wanted. All right, yeah.
Well, we just got through it reasonable time.